Okay, we're going to start. We're missing Counselor Bernard. I think he's en route, and so is Counselor Beck. Counselor Twill is not able to make it tonight. Eleanor is on the phone. Eleanor is down with COVID-19. So she's quite sick, and she said, "I am staying home." And I want to acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is the unceded Mi'kmaq territory. So we have called order any declarations of conflict of interest. Okay, hold on just one second, Counselor Duran. Go ahead.
Public Works Resolution Number Three. My son-in-law owns that company, so I'll step out.
So do you have that, Counselor McCabe? Number three. And soon, you know, he'll know when to step out. Okay, any other? Okay, we have the agenda there in front of you. Any issues, concerns, comments? Okay, Counselor Duran, hold on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The approval of the agenda, when we get to the finance, there's a number of minutes there. Will we be discussing them fully? Because, you know, if we vote on approval of the agenda, I want to know if we're if we're going to, you know, go back to the Number 11 and the referred from council about the BDO. So we'll be discussing those tonight?
So Eleanor, you're on the line there. Counselor Duran, Eleanor, I discussed that today. I think that was inadvertently placed in the minute, in our minutes. That's going to be at our next special meeting to discuss the whole issue, the your questions, and also the 11, the further 11 allegations.
Okay, so when we, when I asked the question last month, and it went back to the council, or back to the committee, and then we agreed to move it up to council, and it says here that it will be discussed by council on April 11th. So that's a written mistake?
That is, yeah. We wanted to encompass or put all the, all the issues in one package.
Okay. You know, I was prepared today, because I'm going through the minutes, to discuss that. I thought we agreed on all that. So I guess I'm asking for a point of order to discuss it tonight.
So you'll need to put a, again, a resolution, but again, we wanted to, and I thought, Mr. Chair, did you think that we were going to discuss his six questions along with the further 11 allegations at the special meeting?
Yeah, yes, I was off the, anyway, off the understanding, I wasn't clear what I saw in the, in the finance piece here, that that's what the Thursday meeting was about, was what I was...
And, you know, when you look at the special meeting packages that we did get, yes, I thought it was there too, but when I look at this, this is all online. This is all, the minutes are online, our website. So, you know, I figured everybody become prepared to do tonight on these issues, and then the special meeting on Thursday, the 11 other issues. So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Eleanor, do you want to add any to that discussion?
Yeah, thank you, dear worship. So after we left the special finance meeting, when this agenda was being determined, the challenge was that the finance meeting took us three hours, almost three hours, to get through. So because of that, when planning for tonight's meeting, given how packed the agenda was, we felt that the finance issue, including the minutes, they should have been included for this special meeting only. And that was just given the amount of time needed to discuss those issues. Thank you.
Counselor Duran, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I understand it's going to take a while to comment. I was prepared to discuss it tonight, so I'd like, I'd like to go by the agenda here. You know, the approval of the agenda, I guess if we're not discussing it, I, I wouldn't vote for, to approve the agenda.
So I need someone to prove, move the agenda, second the agenda. Moved by Counselor Ramsey. Second by Counselor Duran, sorry, Counselor McKinnon. Question called. Okay. Counselor Duran, do you want to say a few words?
I understand they want to put this back, but again, on the approval of the agenda, you know, just, just to pick apart here, and I just heard a couple of problems or issues. The Protective Emergency Services, it says here on the agenda, it's Counselor Trevor McKinnon. So I'm just wondering, has he switched back?
Tracy, can, sorry, Tracy, can you just address that?
Unfortunately, it was just an oversight when the agenda was being formatted.
Okay. So we're back to another agenda. So he, Counselor McKinnon is uneconomic in tourism.
And Counselor Ramsey is the new chair of Protective and Emergency Services.
Okay. And can you, can you enlighten us why the move?
There was a tweaking of the committees, and I think we discussed that earlier last week. And I think if you want to discuss it further, you may want to bring it up with the chief, Chief Police, Brad McConnell. You can call him, or you can speak to Counselor McKinnon about it, but, or Counselor Ramsey. I think that's the, the decision that was made, and that's why we're moving forward.
Okay, it's just that we weren't informed, so, anyway. Thank you for that. Those are both my questions on the approval of the agenda. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, question? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, those against, so it's seven to one. Nope, six to one. Math is right. We're missing Counselor Beck, Bernard, and Twill. Okay, I have now adoption of the minutes. You have the regular monthly meeting and special meetings. Okay, regular monthly meeting, March 13th, 2023. Special meetings, March 23rd, 27, and 31st of 2023. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, Ramsey to adopt, second by Counselor McKinnon. Okay, question? All those in favor of the adoption of the minutes? All those against? Okay, six one. Any business arise and out of the minutes? Seeing none. So I'm going to item number six. Motion to move into a closed session as per section 119 subsection 1B and E of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. B is information received in confidence, which, if disclosed, would likely be prejudicial to the municipality or parties involved. E, a matter still under consideration, on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. So I need someone to move the resolution to move into a closed session. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, second by Counselor McTard. Question? Question's called. All those in favor? Go, good, go ahead. Just one second, Counselor.
Well, thank you very much for that. This was all started before four new counselors came aboard.
Correct.
So maybe they can get a short version of what's happening here, so they can be on same page, maybe?
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
The update is for two reasons. Counselor Ramsey, for the new counselors, and also... Yeah, I know. I'm just, it's just, again, adding to what he asked about that, and moving on with the council that's here. Question? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, those against? Six one. Okay.
Put it in recess, so we can go to the washroom. Thank you, Kim. Okay. No, that's all.
Mr. Forbes, are you on the line?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, item number seven. Number seven, Tracy, we're on back online. No, it says business arising from the closed session. Seeing none. So, we have reports of standing committees of council, and we have the Deputy Mayor Yankoff for Planning and Heritage. Deputy.
Thank you, your worship, and good evening, everybody. The Planning and Heritage Committee met on March 27th. The minutes are in your package. We, the planning board, met on April 3rd. Again, the package minutes are in your package. The Heritage Board met on March 27th. Minutes are in your package. Design Review Board did not meet in March. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee did not meet as well. And I did want to just let everyone know that the the four information sessions that we had for the official plan went really well. And last Thursday was the deadline for folks to submit any additional information, but we have extended that to April 20th, and all that information is on our Charlestown Hall website. And tonight, we have three resolutions for your consideration. And if anyone has any other questions, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Council Yankoff, it's Alex here.
Hello, Mr. Forbes.
How are you? Look, I just been preparing for the package. If when we read the resolution for the water lots, if we could include the following PID, it would certainly be helpful before we go into public meeting. I can read the PID number, if that's acceptable.
Alex, is that resolution one or two or three? What is it?
It would be for the water lots for Valerie Doherty.
So, number two?
And it's just with the PID numbers that are already there, if you can include PID number 335430, it would certainly improve that resolution. Thank you, your worship, and Council Yankoff.
Just repeat that, Alex.
Yeah, it's PID number 335430.
You got that, deputy? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I know. Counselor Dran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you for your report, Deputy Mayor. And I asked a question there last month when we were talking about STRs, and it came to my attention about, I'd like to bring us back to when the university was applying for a building permit. And they told us that the rooms were going to be for long-term students and families that, you know, could check in for four years and not have to worry about getting housing. And then it became aware that they're not using that for long-term as of right now. After the Canada Games, they left it open for the summer, and they can use it for summer accommodations, which has been the past practice for the last 50 years. But when they did come in for a building permit, they told us, you know, they'd be using it for long-term, and they asked for a variance on height. And I know they have a zoning in place for certain rentals due to an institution or whatever. But the manager was going to get back to me, and, you know, someone called me on it today. I guess he never got a chance to get back to me. So, I'm just asking, can you enlighten me on that? Or maybe ask the manager to respond?
Counsel Yankoff.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Dran. And yes, you are correct, you did ask that question. And we'll defer that to Mr. Forbes, because I wouldn't mind the answer to that question as well. So, thank you. Over to you, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you, Counsel Yankoff. So, you know, the issue with, when you're dealing with, you know, foot-to-rentals and who's renting what? I mean, we have a, we have a number of zones that there's various uses allowed in various zones. So, the, if, you know, if it's in reference to the short-term rental bylaw, that's designed to deal with residential areas, and particularly, you know, just to deal with residential areas. The university is owned institutional. And one of the major components of the land use up there, including the classroom activity, is dormitory. They have dormitories on-site to accommodate the students that are on the property. So, in that case, they're, you know, they're under a different category. They're under the category of the dormitory, meaning that, you know, they provide rooms to their students. How they choose to do that, and as landlords, is up to them. But from the city's point of view, you know, what is permitted is a dormitory, and they have, you know, they have a number of dormitories up there that accommodate a number of different people. If there's any other question on that, I would be pleased to answer. Thank you, your worship.
Counsel Yankoff.
Yeah. And I'll just take a stab at this, Counsel Dran. I think what Counsel Dran is asking is that when we approved the height bonus for UPEI, I think what he's wondering is, we had put this into what we think is a development agreement, and maybe we didn't. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Dran, that's what you're wondering about? And I think that's what he's looking for the clarification on it. Whether or not, did we actually include that in a development agreement? I don't think we did. But I think Counsel Dran is looking for confirmation on that. And if that's not correct, Counsel Dran, over to you to clarify.
Counsel Dran.
Thank you. Again, that's a lot of what I'm asking here. But when a builder comes in and asks for a variance and gives you reasons, like myself, if I'm looking to put in a building permit, I have to list what I'm doing. So, those would have been in asking for a variance for height on the condition that this was going to be for long-term. This was going to help the housing in the city. You know, students' families could book these rooms for four years. It was going to take a pressure off the market. And I think council, you know, agreed on this because of what they said. And then when we find out after, you know, the Canada Games, this is not exactly what has been stated, because the rooms are empty, to my knowledge. So, why do we allow a variance on the conditions of one thing, but then it turns around and, well, we're determined in what we want to do now? So, is there any recourse? Like I said, you have to be very specific when you're putting in a building permit. You know, and when it comes before council and council approves it, and then to find out, you know, a year and a half later, this is not the truth, then what is the recourse for council? Or why do we believe anything? And it may be zoning, but, okay, then why did we give the variance? You know? Does that make sense? Thank you.
Deputy. Alex. Just to clarify, on the UPEI student residence, that was also a site-specific amendment, too, was it not?
It was a site-specific amendment, but it was primarily dealing with the height. Now, in order to, you know, when you're dealing with the height, you know, you're dealing with that aspect of the application, unless it was explicitly, you know, stated that, you know, to staff that, you know, restrict the use of the dormitory component, that it could be used for that, that would be somewhat unusual. But I will review the file in its totality tomorrow. I can get back to Counsel Dwyer on. But I don't think that we did do that, that we did not restrict the use of the property, because it was really just dealing with the, you know, the height of the building, the volume of the building. The use wasn't in play. Statements could have been made. They are made somewhat, that's what happens at public meetings. People make these statements. The applicant makes a statement, and, you know, which may or may not prove out to be later to be correct. But unless they are pinned down in a development agreement or there's something very specific on that aspect of the application, then all of the uses that they're entitled to in the institutional zone prevail, and we would have dealt with the height component of that application. But I will review, and I will, I will get the file, review it, to make sure that I am correct on that. And I will, I can get back to Counsel Dwyer on.
Counsel Dran.
Just to follow up through the chair. I understand that. I asked for it last month, and I didn't get it. But, you know, when I voted on it, I'm quite aware of the university and the residents. I am quite aware of what's been going on for the last 35 years. So, it shocked me when this usage was put in place or was asked for. So, yes, it's going to be for four years. And I've never seen that, that a family could move in and attend school and not have to worry about looking for another residence for four years or five years, whatever they're at. So, you know, I gladly voted for that variance. And then to find out that this may not be true is like, well, why do you bother voting on it, then? Like, if I can, if I can come in and ask for a building permit and say a non-truth to council, and then once they agree, then I can go back and change it all. It just, it just doesn't seem right to me. And, you know, I understand you're going to look at it in totality tomorrow, and I appreciate an answer as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Deputy, you're all right with that? So, deputy, I know you weren't here when Holland College built their second residence on Cumberland Street. I don't know if it required a height variance, but I wonder if we can look into that file, too, because they use that as a residence. And then during the summer, they rent it out like they do at UPEI with Blanchard Hall, Bertadine Hall, the Bill and Andrews Hall. And I think this application was no different, but we'll get that clarified. Thank you. Okay, do you want to? And, yeah, go ahead, sir.
I understand that, Mayor Brown. But this was specifically for a height variance. That's what I'm asking. I know what goes on at Holland College and UPEI, quite familiar. But in particular, why I voted on this was, it was supposed to be long-term for these students. And that's why I voted for it, because of the height.
No, it's the same when I voted on the Andrews Hall back in 2003, 2004. There was a height variance, too. And they were also talking about making it accommodating for families and so forth. But in the end, that didn't happen. Anyways, we'll get that clarified. Correct? Okay. Do you want to go with any other questions? Do we want to go with? Ms. Frazier?
Thank you, your worship. I believe, can you hear me, Eleanor? Moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the major variance request to reduce the required side yard setback from 3 meters, 9.8 feet, to approximately 1.57 meters, 5.15 feet, in order to allow an addition on the back of the existing Holland College Wellness Center at 275 Kent Street, PID number 344861 be approved.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Counsel Twill absent. Okay.
Planning Resolution Number Two. Moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to request an amendment to Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions of the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw to permit floating structures' uses on the water lots located in the Water Lot Zone Commercial, WLC, at the southerly terminus of Great George Street, PID number 335307, and Prince Street, PID 335364 and 335430. Be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero. Go ahead.
Planning Resolution Number Three, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions of the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw to construct a new waste-to-energy plant south of the existing building along the shoreline at 40 Riverside Drive, PID number 839332. Be approved to proceed to public consultation. The site-specific exemption would include the following. Allow for an increase to the maximum allowable height in the light industrial M1 zone from 12 meters to 35 meters. Exempt the proposed facility from Regulation 401. the proposed facility from Regulation 4.7.1A building height to increase the maximum allowable height for a rooftop mechanical from three meters to 38 meters above the maximum permitted building height in the light industrial M1 zone, to allow for a smokestack measuring 50 meters in height; and exempt the proposed facility from Regulation 4.7.1B building height to reduce the minimum setback for rooftop mechanical from three meters to two meters from the roof edge.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Counsel Twill. And that's it, uh, deputy? Thank you very kindly. Okay. Counselor McCabe's all ready to go.
Thank you, your worship. The Public Works Committee met on March 22nd, with draft minutes included in your regular monthly council package. The Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities have not met since our last, last monthly council meeting. We anticipate five resolutions to be forwarded this evening. A few updates, um, that I wanted to just highlight. Questions are coming in about curbside pickup for leftover stumps and wood from Fiona. Um, we will be discussing this at our next committee meeting, so stay tuned, kind of on the plan for that. As well, there will be an open house for Park Street and Beach Street connection on April 17th, from seven to eight, at the East Link Center Boardroom. Letters did go out today to homeowners on those streets, and I think we all received an email, or if we, I know Counselor, who would have received an email, if you want to share that further. Our crews are starting to come back at the first of next week. Spring cleanup will commence with street sweeping, beautification, lawn cleanup. We'll start to see more people around the cities cleaning it up. Water plow, excuse me, water plow damage, or water, winter plow damage, water plow, winter plow damage. There's going to be now five crews, um, instead of four this year, and each crew will be responsible for two ward areas. And their plan is that they will start on a street, they will finish that street, and they will move through. So, they're not going to be going and flipping to where people are calling. The plan is, is they're going to get through all our wards, um, and make sure that everyone's taken care of. And the final thing, uh, manager has requested that, as residents do come to you with requests, whether they are directed to email, uh, either the manager or assistant manager directly, or we as councillors can email the, the questions or concerns directly to the manager or assistant manager, which just make it easier so that they can, uh, make sure that all requests are marked and added to the work order. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Any questions for the councillor representing, Counselor Matur?
Thank you, Chair McCabe. Uh, I do have a follow-up question, or two questions, uh, on, in regard to the notification to Park Street, Beach Street merger. My question is, uh, I, I understand the notices went out. Were, did those notices go out to both Park Street and Beach Street? And if so, were they on to both sides of the residence, up and down? Or was it in just relation to, like, 100 meters from where the construction, uh, will appear? So, if I could get some clarification on that, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, yes, from my understanding, residents on both sides of the street receive notice on both Park Street as well as Beach Street. And if I'm not correct, uh, am I correct? I'm correct. Yep.
Was there any on Kensington Road, or is it just strictly Park and Beach Street?
Park and Beach Street.
And my second question while I'm up is, uh, just wondering through the chair, if I can get an update on the Belvedere roundabout, uh, completion of that work from the last update I received a couple of months ago. I think we were, the equipment had arrived, the, the light poles, et cetera. Uh, just an update when that may, that work may commence, um, in that area.
I'm going to turn that one right over to the manager.
Uh, your worship, um, so I'll have to get back to you on that one. Um, we'll have, we're, we're asking all our contractors from, uh, for work that has carried over into, into this year, for schedule of the final, all the final work. Um, so we can ensure that as soon as we do get it from the, from the contractor on, on what they're scheduling. But it should be early spring that things get cleaned up in that area.
Right. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Sue, can, can we go to the first, uh, resolution? One of five?
Thank you, your worship. First resolution, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McAllaire. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotations on ready-mix concrete in aggregate for the 2023 season, the submission of CRM Ready Mix Limited for the following materials shall be accepted. Thirty-two MPA concrete at $230.50 plus all applicable taxes per cubic yard. Thirty-five MPA concrete, $235 plus all applicable taxes per cubic yard. Class A granular gravel, $56 plus all applicable taxes per ton. One and a half crushed gravel, $59 plus all applicable taxes per ton. Fiber mesh concrete curbing, $15 plus all applicable taxes per cubic yard. And that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions? Question called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero.
The second resolution, your worship, is moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McAllaire. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotations for backhoe and truck hire for culvert services, the low submission of Lee McDonald Construction in the amount of $143 per hour plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero. Okay, and Counselor Dron, you're in conflict the next one? He's moved, we will, just wait? In a minute?
The third resolution, your worship, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, is seconded by Counselor John McAllaire. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotations for topsoil supply, the low submission of landmark in the amount of $18.75 per, uh, per cubic yard common delivered, and $25 per cubic yard screened delivered, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Yep. Counselor Dron, can someone just? So, we have...
The fourth resolution, your worship, uh, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McAllaire. That is per the conditions of the request for quotations for supply of hot mix asphalt, tack and cold mix, the submission of the Island Construction Limited for following materials shall be accepted. Asphalt B mix, $191.10 plus applicable taxes per ton. Asphalt D mix, $209.30 plus all applicable taxes per ton. Asphalt tack, $1,750 plus of all applicable taxes per ton. And asphalt cold mix, $265 plus all applicable taxes per ton. And that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero.
The last resolution, your worship, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McAllaire. That has per the conditions of the request for quotations for supply and installation of new Charlottetown Public Works Building Furniture and Workstations, the low submission of Atlantic Business Interiors in the amount of $68,094 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero. Okay. Thank you, uh, Chief Engineer Scott and Counselor McCabe, thank you very much. Just, uh, I don't know if I mentioned, but, uh, our CAO is on the line. She is home with, uh, not feeling well, so she has phoned in, and if you want to interject any time there, Eleanor, please do so. Okay, economic development. Counselor McKinnon.
The Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee met on March 16th, and the minutes are included in your package. Few notes here, the ARTS Advisory Board did not meet, as the new committee has not yet been appointed. There's one resolution for your consideration, and we encourage you to read the minutes and a full overview of recent work being undertaken by the department, but we'll offer a few highlights here at this time. Staff are working with Downtown Charlottetown, Inc., to update their annual state of the downtown document and assist with their reporting processes. The city will work to provide DCI with additional data that will play a valuable role in building and growing businesses in the downtown, as well as attracting potential investment. Staff have been working with Immigrant and Refugee Services Association PEI on the organization of the City Hall Newcomer Open House, which will be held on May 10th. Further information details will be shared in the coming weeks. The city has recently been awarded hosting rights to the 2023 Canadian Capital Cities Organization Annual Conference, and the 2024 additions of the Communities in Bloom National Symposium and Awards, and Contact East through bids led directly by the municipality. Local announcements are pending. A huge shout-out goes out to the University of Prince Edward Island for successfully hosting the U-Sports Men's Hockey National Championship, and to the Charlottetown Fire Department, who played a huge role in the recent hosting of the Canadian Firefighters Curling Championship. The city was proud to be partner in these events through both attracting and hosting. The city and Confederation Court Mall are collaborating to bring the Refugee Tent Canada exhibit to Charlottetown. The exhibit, created by the Canadian Museum and Immigration at Pier 21 in Halifax, introduces Canada's role to the global refugee crisis and shares the experiences and contributions of refugees in Canada. This free exhibit is on display at the second floor of the Confederation Court Mall until the end of May, end of April, sorry. And the city has partnered with the Charlottetown Library Learning Center on the TD Art Corridor, which provides a space for local artists to exhibit their work within the new library. The first exhibit, Messages from the Cosmic Field, by Charlottetown-based artist Renee Laprise, closes on April 15th. If you've not yet had a chance to check it out, I encourage you to drop by. Three additional exhibits are planned for 2023, with the local call, jury process, and installation being managed through this town is small. This concludes my report, and I, our staff, are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor Beck.
Thank you for your report there, Counselor McKinnon. Um, I just have, uh, two questions. Uh, one, uh, what is Contact East? Uh, maybe, uh, Counselor McKinnon, if you could just elaborate on what that is, uh, first?
I'm going to defer that question to, uh, Mr. Wong.
Through the chair, your worship, um, Counselor Beck, Contact East is, um, similar to East Coast Music Awards, but from a cultural perspective, so it's not at the same size in terms of scope. It's, uh, it's a bit smaller, but it's very much focused more on culture, so that's the comparison that I would offer in terms of how they align.
And what does that involve exactly?
So, it would be, um, similar to the East Coast Music Awards again, so there would be a professional development component, uh, conference style of meeting associated with that. There would also be, um, open performances, whether that be in, um, genres such as dance or arts, um, theatrical production, et cetera.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, thank you for that, Wayne. Uh, just one other question. Um, I was, I'm, I'm really, uh, uh, the first I heard about this Refugee Canada tent was in this, um, in this package. Uh, I think it's a great, uh, exhibit. These exhibits are very informative. I've, I've been to some of these Canadian museum runs in the past, and they're tremendous, really, the way they, the work they put into them. Uh, I'm just wondering, I haven't seen this anywhere. Can we promote this through our social comms, um, so we can share that information a little bit more readily? Uh, I just, I'm trying to pay attention to that sort of stuff. I just haven't seen it anywhere. If we could maybe move it along on the social channels a little bit too, it'd be great.
That's it. Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, thank you for the questions, Counselor Beck, but I will refer that to Mr. Wong.
Um, through the chair, your worship, uh, Counselor Beck, the, our communications staff, um, are familiar with this product and have been doing or scheduled to do some communications around it. Our cultural staff is working directly with them. Uh, the Confederation Court Mall is the host, is also, um, partnering with us to do some promotion around it as well, so we can look at other ways to try to promote this. It is very much in a high-profile area within the mall, so hopefully, um, some traffic will, will land there naturally as, as well, but of course, we want to have the most benefit from it as we can get.
Any other questions? Just on the U-Sports, uh, Counselor McKinnon, I just want to give a big shout-out for Counselor Beck, because, uh, he was a active role player in that, uh, event, uh, that brought in the best teams in, in, in Canada play here in Charlottetown. And, uh, he was not only participating as a fan, but he was also doing the broadcast and up in the broadcast booth, so, uh, thanks for the play-by-play and well done. It was a great, great week and well-received. Okay. Very good week. Do we have a resolution? Yes, we do.
We do, your worship.
Okay.
We have one resolution, and it's moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor John McAllaire. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown enter into an MOU with Communities in Bloom Canada to host the 2024 Communities in Bloom National Symposium and Awards, and that the city's portion of the hosting fee, $65,000, be expensed from the 2023, 2024 for $35,000, and the 2024, 2025 budget for $30,000 as per attached. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. Thank you there, Wayne. Okay. Having a good chew there? Having a good chew? Next report, it's Counselor, Counselor Bernard.
Your worship, the Environment Sustainability Committee met on, uh, March 29th. Minutes in your package, there is one resolution. Um, just some highlights, I'd like to highlight, your worship, to you and council. First of all, when we talked about just the last couple of, uh, last couple of meetings here, we mentioned about the flood protection rebate program. So, that $80,000 is now committed. And we talked the last couple of months about getting your request in and so on, so people have listened and the requests are in, and, uh... If there's any money left over, uh, there, there's a waitlist, it'll be contacted. There's 91 rebates that we provided through the program, 20 people are currently on a waitlist, so we'll see if any, any more money comes available for that program, but right now, the funds are committed. Your worship, the city's annual community sustainability and micro grant program is now accepting applications. The fund provides community sustainability initiatives with up to $2,500 for projects that work towards the goals of the city's integrated community sustainability, uh, plan. Applications are open till May 3rd, 4 o'clock, and more information can be found at charlottetown.ca/microgrants. It's always been a popular, popular program, worship, so I suspect that we'll have lots of applicants again this year. The other thing I'd like to mention, your worship, is the Environment Sustainability in consultation with Public Works, Parks and Rec, uh, submitted six funding applications to the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Fund. This is a federal... This is a federal program through Infrastructure Canada. This funding can provide up to 80% of project costs as a grant, and is only available for recreation or public community buildings. You heard me right, 80% as a grant. So recreating in public community buildings such as arenas, community centers, the funding is for energy-saving projects as well as, your worship, options for improving accessibility of the buildings. So if all these projects get approved, it'll be a cost of $1.6 million, which getting $1.3 million in the grant will leave a $300,000 cost to the city. And with the P E I efficiency rebates, we'll be good for $61,000, so basically $240,000 for the upgrades of $1.6 million. And your worship, the projects that were submitted is Cody Banks Arena for heat pumps and solar panels, Hillsport Park Community Center for heat pumps, solar panels, and the accessibility recto-fit we talked about, Malcolm Derrick Community Center for ground mount solar panels, West Rowley Community Center for heat pumps, LEDs, and the accessibility recto-fit, and Victoria Park Clubhouse for solar panels, heat pump, windows, insulation. So certainly a good program. We're hoping to get them all approved, but time will tell. And your worship, the last thing I think worth mentioning, and I know it's in the binder, but I think it's worth mentioning, I'm just, it's a good read. I'm just going to give a Reader's Digest version here, but the city partnered with Farm and Food Care on a pile project that ran from January 22 to January 23. The end result of that was the rescue of 147,000 meals and 103 new users to the Second Harvest App that matches farmers, food wholesalers, and retailers, who have surplus food with charitable organizations that could put the food to good use. So your worship, how it works is the business contributes food waste by posting their surplus food on the Food Rescue App, which alerts, with Zen Alerts, nonprofits that it's available for pickup. And like I say, it has saved 147,000 meals, so it's worth a read. Anyway, if there's any other questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
That's great there. Love the green shirt there to Counselor. Green, green, he's green through. We did get an update on your ridership too. Did you notice that? Okay. And did you fail to mention the letter from the minister regarding your transit for the 400? Did you want to mention that? Oh, did you? But it's confirmed now.
Confirmation for 475, yeah. You got, you got, you got the confirmation, I guess, yeah.
Okay, any questions?
To say, your worship, that obviously the 431,000 of that 475 is the city's. And still 21, 21.5 goes to Cornwall and Stratford. And our staff will be working with T3 to start looking at implementing in the extra times and the extra routes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Fraser.
Your worship, we have one resolution from Environment and Sustainability, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, that council approve the attached community garden policy for adoption, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called?
You know what, I'm just going to give some background, because I don't know if anybody, everybody really understands this, so I just wanted to read a little bit. The community garden framework is intended to clearly and comprehensively guide how the city works with and supports community gardens in Charlottetown. One component of building a community garden framework included the creation of a community garden policy for the city. Support for local food growing and community gardens is a priority within the city's Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and the food charter, and is an important element of sustainability and climate action in Charlottetown. So this work also aligns with sustainability and community engagement commitments in the city's strategic plan, along with the community building and infrastructure and environment pillars. So because of this, your worship, staff recommended providing support to gardens located both on and off city property, city parkland. Applications for community gardens on city land would be reviewed by the Environment and Sustainability Department and the Parks and Recreation Department. So just a little background to that resolution, your worship.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Bernard.
Yes, just a follow-up question to that is, the community garden, Mr. Chair, is the community garden policy new? Or was it in existence before and just being adopted now, kind of unofficial before?
No, this is something that, as far as I know, is new. Best new place.
And then as a result of that, what about existing community gardens now? And how do they, are they, you know, retroactive to this or grandfathered into any of the policies that are outlined in here?
I suspect they'd be grandfathered in. They have been eligible for the grant that we give to these, these garden plots.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The only thing, the only thing I will add, your worship, is, you know, some people make questions about the private property, and I guess that's going to, a lot of that's up to the landowner for live builds and so on. But if that gets worked out, as N M O U written, we will give that grant, I believe the grant is $300. Yeah.
Is it 300?
It's just a policy trying to get as much land available as we can for people to grow community gardens. Yeah. Thank you.
It's an annual stipend, and the current community garden we have now is on Desprezay Park property, and they get the $300 annual stipend, so that would be provided to other groups if they were approved and go through the channels and we get request budget and get budget. Yep, $300, and it goes towards tools or compost or garden supplies.
Yeah.
I could get an update. Do you know if the community garden got off the ground at Frank McCauley? Because, just if you could, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Bernard.
I believe it has, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And the Desprezay Garden has been going since 2002? Okay. Question's been called? Oh, yes, sir. Counselor Beck.
Sorry, just, do we have an inventory of where these are? Like, can that be shared, but it's just so, I'd be, I'd just like to know myself. Of community gardens, the ones that are on city land? I mean, I didn't know about the Frank McCauley one, I didn't, I don't even know if we have one where we are. I just sort of be, I'd just like to know myself, that'd be good.
Yeah, and Frank McCauley was just a new one, just up, just upstarted. The conversation around that last year. But yeah, that's no problem, we can get you on this, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Three? Is that what you said?
Sorry, I was going to say, this website contains that information.
Okay.
Yep, it has maps and inventory of the community gardens.
Okay. Good. Question? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Okay, that's it there, Counselor. Thank you kindly. Thank you very much. And Counselor Beck?
Thank you, your worship. So the Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on Thursday, March 23, 2023, and the draft minutes are attached. And we do have no resolutions for your consideration. Just one thing I do want to clarify, under the new business on page three, it mentioned about Mayor Brown requested that the Basic Income Guarantee Presentation be added to a future committee agenda. I think we clarified after that meeting that that presentation had already taken place at the committee level, and that if it were to happen again, it would be a presentation to all of council, am I correct on that?
Yes, that's the correction, yes. Deputy Mayor, was that, I think that's the discussion we had, because we already had that discussion. And we also met with the two other mayors from Stratford and Cornwall with Wayne Easter and Marie Burge, and I think that was where we were going with it. So it'll come to council, that is on the agenda, not this Thursday soon, but it'll be coming up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Just one other thing I do want to mention to you, since our, the R F P for our framework for the D E I, or Diversity Equity Inclusion, got deferred, we will be putting the religious signage back on to the committee level for future discussion at a later time. Because we had deferred that to the D E I framework, and since we're not proceeding ahead with that, we will put that back on. It's an item that had been on previous agendas and just got deferred, but we will put that back on to the committee coming back at our next meeting, which may happen in April or may not happen because of conflicts that are going on. So anyway, any other questions? I will do my best to answer them.
Counselor Dran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you for your report, Counselor Beck. I'm reading in your minutes there in, under reports, it says, "These regulations will come into effect April 1st, 2023. One of the areas with significant change is penalties. The city of Charlottetown's Council Code of Conduct bylaw is in compliance." What, has it all always been in compliance, or has there been changes that, to make it more compliant? Or can you clear that up, please?
Counselor Beck.
My understanding from that was the provincial government was looking for some feedback, some direction, some input on the M G A. That was shared with council back, I'm going to say, January, with the request to get any feedback or any input to me. I think the deadline was, I can't remember, maybe the end of 1st February or end of February, I can't remember any exact dates, but once that, we didn't receive any feedback from anyone on that, so it was, it was, they looked at our policy, our policy was to be, deemed to be in compliance, and as a result, it's now into effect as of that time. This is my understanding.
Counselor Dran.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown, and again, thank you, Counselor Beck. You know, one of the areas with significant change is penalties. You know, has this just been an email? Was it discussed at your council meeting? Was there a legal opinion given? You know, because a lot of times in the code of conduct, you know, there was questions, is our bylaw compliant with, with the M G A? That was my concern, and I think we're waiting on, on an opinion. But to see it here, maybe we don't need that opinion. I don't know if, if you can answer that, or the C A O or the mayor could, could answer where I'm going with that. Thank you.
Counselor Beck.
I'll defer this to either you, your worship, or to C A O Eleanor. I don't really have a lot further to add to the conversation.
This was brought up at our Finance Committee meeting last week, and I believe we asked our legal counsel to provide some clarification. And I did reach out to some legal, a legal friend of mine to look into the issue, and she came back with some information that I'm going to share with Karen on this issue. So, yeah, it's, clarification's required because Counselor, Counselor Dran is asking for it, so we'll get that clarification. But at the meeting that took place with Strategic Priorities Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation, we checked off the box with the department, and that's why we're moving on. Counselor Dran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm just wondering, like, you checked the box off with the department, was that the Department of Municipal Affairs? Is that, is that where you're checking it, or?
Municipal Affairs is responsible for the M G A.
Okay, so they said that...
Clarify me, or correct me if I'm wrong there, Counselor Beck.
From my, my recollection is, they basically said, here's what we are proposing to be the code of conduct policy under the M G A. They offered us the opportunity to provide any amendments, changes, modifications. We didn't have any, and so the, thereby, we went ahead with the proposal. We didn't have any issues that were brought to my attention, so we went ahead with the proposal. It was, as was outlined under the from Municipal Affairs.
Counselor Dran.
Thank you. That's, that's a good clarification, Counselor Beck, thank you. It's just, when we were talking about, about a three-month penalty or 500 in the M G A, you know, where, where did that land? You know, when I, when I see this, that Charlottetown's Council Code of Conduct bylaw is compliant, like, is it compliant? Like, is that, the box, was it checked off, municipal affairs said you're in compliance or three-month penalty, is compliant with the M G A?
No, as you asked at last week's meeting, our legal counsel is going to look into it.
Still going to look into it?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's being done. But as I said, I looked into it today, and I do have an email that I will forward to our legal counsel to look at.
Okay. All right, so maybe we get an update maybe by Thursday at our special meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Beck, that's good. No resolutions? Okay.
Thank you, your worship, if I may.
Go right ahead there, C A O Eleanor.
Thank you. I just want to get some clarity in terms of timelines in looking at the Municipal Government Act in terms of compliance. That request was to be sent to not our regular lawyers, so that request still needs to be sent out, and I will be doing that. I can't guarantee there will be an answer for Thursday's meeting, but that will be done, and an answer will soon be forthcoming. Thank you.
And we will be looking into it, that's, that's for sure. Counselor Dran.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, C A O Eleanor. I know you're out sick and, and you're trying to do your best there, and I appreciate that. I'm certainly willing to wait for a timeline. Thank you.
Okay. Next report, Finance Administration, Counselor John McAllaire.
Thank you, your worship. The Finance Audit Administration Tendering Committee met on the following dates, the 16th, March 16th, 17th, 21st, April 5th, for their meetings, included in this package are the draft minutes. There's, there's no, there's no resolutions. However, I would like to just, just make some, just make some general comments. I know the Finance Committee has gone through a busy month with getting the operational, the capital and the operational budgets out. Again, I'd like to thank the staff and department heads in my committee for, for meeting those timelines and getting those documents submitted and reported on. Again, looking forward, going forward, working with our new C A O, Eleanor Mohammed, Finance, new Finance Minister, Finance Manager, Betty French, in working on, working on the recommendations that the B D O report have provided us, committee, as a committee looking, you know, vigilant to follow through, to see that those recommendations get acted upon. And the K P M G Governance Report, there's some, there's some great, great recommendations there to work with as well. And I just think it's going to be an exciting year for the, you know, for the, you know, for the city with the, with the budgets. We've, there's additional staff being hired, and I just think it, I think it's going to be a great year for the city of Charlottetown. Also, there's circulated on your, on your desks, an updated financial statement, well, it shows it's dated there, 11 months end in February 28, 2023. And I know going forward, Betty, correct me if I'm wrong, has, has the intentions that we'll have this kind of a financial update on a monthly basis for council, kind of give us an idea where we are, pretty close to, you know, a current. So it's, it's going to be good information, so. That kind of, that concludes my, my comments, unless there's questions. And if there are anything on the financials, I'm sure I'll probably defer to Betty if there's anything that anybody has. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I was talking to Counselor Beck there, trying to tell him what I was asking for, and I don't know if I heard the minutes from the 16th, 17th, 21st, and April 5th. Is that what you're referring to here today?
Yes, just, correct.
Okay. Can we defer the meeting minutes from April 5th until Thursday night? You know, I don't feel comfortable approving the minutes because there was a lot of recommendations that were supposed to go to council, you know, on number 11. So can we just defer this until Thursday night so we can discuss?
I think we made that decision already, correct?
The Finance Committee will approve those minutes at their next meeting. They don't approve those here.
They go to the next meeting.
Go to the next committee meeting.
It's per the report, and that's why when we meet at our next special meeting, they'll be part of the package.
From April?
April 5th. And the dates prior. We'll bring those in, too.
We'll bring those in, too.
Yeah.
So what are we voting on here?
There's no vote. There's no resolution. He's just bringing you up to date on what took place over the last...
So we're not approving the minutes from these?
They'll be approved at the next meeting.
They're all in draft. They're currently draft minutes.
Yeah, they're in draft.
That's great. Thank you.
Counselor McLeire, so everyone did get the update, the February snapshot? Any questions about that February snapshot and where we're at? And if you do have any questions, John, they can forward them to you or Betty French. Okay. Okay, moving on. Human Resources, Counselor Matar.
Thank you, your worship. The Human Resource Committee last met on April 4th, 2023. The minutes of the meeting are encoded in your package, and there are no resolutions for council's consideration. If you have any questions, our manager, Emily MacLeod, sends her regrets. I'll do my best to address those or bring them back to her if it's nothing that I can answer at this point in time.
Bless you.
No questions?
No questions. Trying to be a kind bunch here. Okay, Counselor Matar, thank you very much. Okay. Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship. We did not meet, Protective and Emergency Committee did not meet last month, this last council meeting. There is one resolution, but I have a few notes, your worship, if I may. The National, the National Firefighters, the Curling Championship was held March 24th till April 1st. The event was chaired by Peter McDonald. He's the deputy fire chief, and then Winston Bryan, fire chief here. It went over fantastic. It was the first time it was held since the last three years it was held council with the COVID. When it first started, it was at the Charlottetown Curling Club, but we all know we can't go back there anymore for curling. The Mustard Hydrogen Championship went to B C, won gold, Southern Ontario won silver, and Alberta won bronze. I don't know what happened to our boys anyway, but they gave it a good showing, and they gave $25,000 to the Mustard Hydrogen. So I'd like to just say thank you very much to Winston and all the Charlottetown people. The host was here at Rod's in Charlottetown, the Host Hotel, but they're going to Monaco to play, which only made sense. But things have been very well, and that's it, your worship. Oh, and I'm sorry, we have one plaque. No, that's like Stanley Cup New York Islanders. So we have one plaque there that was passed on to the city as our appreciation. So if anyone will ever look at that. And we have one resolution, worship. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Again, Kevin, thank you, Counselor Ramsey, thank you, and thanks to Winston, Peter McDonald from Crossroads, and Brian Burke, great job, chief. They did a great event. I know the deputy was at the final event on Saturday night. I went down for lobster supper the night before, so it was a great night. A resolution? Question? Hold on, Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. This has to do with the resolution, but not particularly, so I'm just going to ask it and kind of tie it together. I know that I was talking to a lady that had a property that there was a lot of garbage, and of course now, soon as the snow's gone, there's a lot of garbage, you know, everybody can see it now. And the issue is that the bylaw officer does a terrific job in getting the person that owns the property and gives them a notice. And then, you know, after one or two or three notices, then it goes to the committee. The committee rules on it for a specific area to be cleaned up, and then it goes to council full approval. My question is, is there any way we can fast-track this on every second Friday rather than waiting for properties to be, you know, spilled over in garbage and vermin start to...
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one.
Eleanor, are you still there?
I am, your worship. Thank you.
Yeah, so what I'm asking is for this month to go back to the committee and see if we can come in on a, say, every second Friday, or, you know, to get these properties cleaned up, right? It could be six or eight weeks by the time it gets to committee council and then the job. So what I'm asking is if the committee could look at some way of streamlining it.
Counselor McCabe. Oh, sorry, Counselor Ramsey.
We're friends now, Julie. Thank you for your question, Counselor Dron. In fact, when I sat on public, on police, before, I brought that up a few years ago, you and I were there to fast-track this, and I had discussions with the police chief, and he had them with their new C A O, too. What we're trying to do, and not let the cat out of the bag here, but we're just trying to do is have the power back in the bylaw officers where it doesn't have to come to council. So let him do his job after his third warning or second warning. Well, then he would get a hold of Public Works and say, okay, you can go in, clean this property up, things along that line. So that is on the agenda, and we are going to bring it up again, and we're really working on that because I'm in full agreement with you on that. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
And it's, thank you, and thank you, I'm piggybacking off that. I already did put an email into Counselor Ramsey to have this discussion at committee level. And I know there's legislation issues when I followed up with you, your worship, but you're right, we can't wait six weeks to eight weeks when there's garbage and when there's rats and when there's people that are not taking care of what needs to be taken care of. So I look forward to the follow-up. Thank you.
And we have it on the agenda for the next, for this month, and we're really going to go at it and see where it goes from there. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. But I think now it could be done every two weeks. We have our second Monday of the month meeting, which is tonight. We have the last, the fourth meeting of the month. Just the bylaw officer has to write it up.
Chief?
Are you saying you want to have another committee meeting?
Just one sec. Can I just, Counselor Ramsey, can we just refer to the chief? Chief, do you want to just provide some insight? It is a private property issue.
Yes, your worship. It has been our practice over the last year or so to bring it to committee prior to taking it to council, which has caused some delays, and certainly we're very supportive of trying to find some efficiencies in that and empowering the bylaw, as the counselor said, to do his job and take some of the bureaucracy out of it.
Okay. Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and I appreciate that, Counselor Ramsey, you know, kind of oversee the fact that, you know, our bylaw officer is a sworn police officer, so, you know, what he sees is right or wrong, you know, we'll have to go with his discretion because, you know, he's professional in his job, and he does it very well. So anything that we can do to give him more power to get this stuff cleaned up would be great, and thank you very much.
Counselor Bernard.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I don't think there's ever been a time where the bylaw officer brought one of these up to the committee, and the committee said no. It always just comes right to the council, so. I didn't know the committee had to approve it, so to me, I would be agreeable to just let the bylaw officer put it ahead and have it come to council.
Legislative process we have to follow. There's a process that...
Which is council to approve it.
Committee, and then to council. That's why you have standing committees. But can we just, chief, can you just provide more clarification? And what about even the summary of defense ticketing system in place? Could we use that? Summary of defense ticketing system? We're trying to get it...
Yes, your worship, there is provisions in the summary, under the bylaw to issue fines, and I'll follow up to look at any legislative limitations to this and get back to committee at the next meeting.
Counselor Bernard, and then Counselor McLeire.
To follow legislative protocol, it has to go to the committee. It can't come to council, the vote coming from the bylaw officer. Is that correct?
Procedural bylaw, it has to be a recommendation from the standing committee to council. Remember how we got caught up with that last year? That's why the process is a little tighter. But if the chief is saying that we can use a ticketing system to issue a fine, and that doesn't work, we have the other option of going in and cleaning it up.
I thought under slightly bylaw, it was the bylaw officer writes it up, and he's addressing the bylaw, and it comes to council to approve it. I'm not sure what the committee's doing, other than Robert Stappin it, really.
Well...
Yeah, is, why wait six weeks by the time it comes back to here? Like, if he hits it the first of April, or the end of February, for example, he writes somebody up, and then it's a whole month of April and all that, like, it just goes too long?
Yeah.
And we always approve it anyway. Like, let the bylaw officer do his job as fast as possible and have all this cleaned up. Because he has all the addresses of people that own properties, even if they don't live here and all that, because I went more tours with him, and he knows what he's doing.
Counselor McLeire.
Just curious, what's the history of these sort of things when going to clean up at the owner's expense in terms of collections? Is that any...
Well, there's a, like, there's a lien on the property. So let's say it was your place or my place, and then we didn't pay when we had our Public Works crew go in there and do it, and then if all of a sudden we put our property up for sale, well, there's a lien against it that got to come to us first. I mean, what they owe us, whether it's $1,000 or $300, something like that, and then they can sell the property. But they have to pay the city first, because there is some properties that never paid, as you and I both know, for years.
So would we have a knowledge of what that would look like on our books? What's outstanding? What's...
I don't know. If Public Works would have that, or...
That's a good one, Finance check.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good, and we'll send it back to Finance.
Hey, I'll talk to myself. Thank you.
Chief?
Yeah, your worship, certainly I don't have the data currently, but if something you're interested in, we could try to source it through Finance, and some of it, it may be hard to measure, given it may come in in dribs and grabs over long periods of time, so. And so, but if, I certainly could inquire.
A resolution? Okay. Okay, so, thank you very much.
Your worship, one resolution from Protective and Emergency Services, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Be it resolved that the Public Works manager be authorized to remove any garbage in other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, cleanup and property dispose of same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 195 Waymus Street, P I D number 339309, 30 Grafted Street, P I D number 340067, 165 Prince Street, P I D number 342600, and 237 St. Peters Road, P I D 900969, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown.
Question? Questions called? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine zero. A little worm in here. Okay. Counselor Matar, it's already Parks Recreation.
Okay, I'd just like to say that Chair Mitch Twill sends his regrets this evening, so I will provide the report. The Parks Recreation Leisure Activities Committee did not meet this month, and therefore there are no minutes in your package, and there are no resolutions for the department. However, I would like to acknowledge all the hard work and great projects that are underway with the department, and not to single any particular one out, but I do have an update here I think would be worth noting is the update on the Simmons Sports Center replacement project. So construction work is underway at the Simmons Sports Center replacement project. As part of Tender Package Number Four, the contractor has completed the initial site preparation work and has removed and relocated the main electrical underground line to Colonel Gray School, and the footings work has started yesterday. As part of Tender One, Tender Package One, the pre-engineered steel building is scheduled to arrive the week of April 24th, with installation expected to commence the week of May 8th. Tender Package Number Six, Community Building, the arena interior and site work is anticipated to be posted by April 17th and be posted for a three- to four-week period. So lots of activity happening over there. You can see it now as you drive by, so, you know, if people are wondering how things are progressing there, we wanted to provide a bit of an update. But again, lots of great projects that are happening with the department, and more updates to come as we progress into the summer months here. Thank you. Any questions? We do have Mr. Quinn here. He'll address those for you if I can.
Any questions? I was on site yesterday. Looks great.
Thank you.
Moving forward. Thank you. Counselor Matar. Water and wastewater. Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee meeting did not occur in March. We were doubled up last month with the budget consultations. I have one resolution for council to vote on today, and the background is there under the committee notes. I can certainly explain it, but it's self-explanatory. If anybody needs an explanation, I can certainly read it. Any questions you may have against water and sewer this month, I'll try to ask them as best I can. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Counselor Dron. I was just on the board with you, and I should have asked this question when we had our last week, but we didn't have one. What about the meters? Are we caught up? Is 99% people with meters now, or is it still at 85 or 92? Richard, or, sorry, Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. That, I certainly don't have that information on my fingertips. I'm sure our manager wouldn't have the up-to-date percentage either, but feel free to answer that question as best you can. Thank you.
Yeah, so, your worship, thank you for the question. There are still a few who have not yet joined the metering program, and we continue to give them a strong encouragement to join. It is now less than 200 of our more than 10,000 customers who are metered, and we are seeing the benefits with respect to water conservation in the city.
Doing a great job there, Richard. Okay, want to read the resolution?
Your worship, one resolution, and it's moved by Counselor Bob Dron, seconded by Counselor Justin Matar, that City Council adopt the attached updated conditional management plan, C M P. The C M P is for the management of shellfish harvesting in conditionally managed harvest areas adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant and collection system located in Charlottetown, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution. to implement this resolution.
John, John, okay. Question called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any new business? Oh, you sure? Positive? Motion to adjourn? Moved. Seconded by Counsel Matart, moved by Counsel Beck. All those in favor? Thank you very much.